What you have, and it's color-coded on what we got in the League of Cities. It didn't come out in your packet, it's color-coded. But first part is gray, that's nothing to that, we just fill in the blanks there. Then we get into the optional provisions, and that's why I wanted to bring this to council. We got the yellow, hearing officer only can recommend orders, consideration of the board. That's one option. Hearing officers may issue final orders. These final orders must be appealed to the Code Enforcement Board before proceeding to District Court. Again, we've got another layer of delay. The one I like the best, hearing officer may issue final orders, and those may be appealed directly to District Court. So, we eliminate some delay and complications there. But, you know, it's up to council which of those options you want. You know, but, then, this is just for all it's like, for all it's like. The final order again, goes back to how we approach it, whether it be to the Code Enforcement Board, or it would be assigned to a hearing officer, or go directly to District Court. You know, personally, again, I'm for the blue, but it's not my decision, I'm the lowly city attorney, so you all get paid the big bucks to make these decisions. We have that, and all this is in your package, but it just didn't come through as color-coded. That's just how many we have to have.
We're still poor enough, we don't have color copies.
I thought you know, maybe next time I can do color copies.
Put down the water, obviously, they realize.
Yeah, water.
Rest of this, Code Enforcement Board, we have to figure out how much we want to pay them. We have the board, or we have to figure out.
No, Bud, the board does not have to meet monthly.
No.
They do not have to meet monthly. So, it's kind of a use of the needed thing, they don't have to meet if we ain't got no.
And this just gets into the organization there.
That says any meetings that the Code Enforcement Board and hearing officer do.
Maybe we do have to do it every month.
Would have to meet the Kentucky Open Meetings Act, which means it's open to the public and the media every time.
Very good meeting to be held on, we probably have to figure out, I guess we would have to have a monthly meeting. Boy, the hall, we don't, board's not required to meet monthly, provided.
We could have it quarterly, or you could have it on a, as needed, if you got cases that month, it means you don't, don't. It's kind of how District Court, or they lay them all over.
You know, what we could put in there, you know, maybe have me quarterly, and then the orders, you know, needed. No, don't need that conflict during, again, I can't prosecute the case, I mean, I have to prosecute the cases for the city potentially, so I could not be the hearing officer.
And neither can I. No, it takes politics and bias out of, because no elected official can be on the board, or serve as a hearing officer, or have any part of the hearing.
I had somebody express their thoughts about this today, and he said he would do this if he got paid.
If he got paid, he can do it.
He's put out his name?
Yeah, he can.
This other stuff, the roller plate.
I personally like the idea of us beefing up how we do it, and I agree with, but in keeping it as simple as possible. I think it makes sense.
Otherwise, it's going to get off there.
Right.
We're not liking it.
No.
So, that's why I make the kiss approach.
The only thing that I didn't love, the idea of a hearing officer making a final order. The hearing officer, I'm okay with the hearing officer making the final order. If, I'd rather have it to where the person can appeal it back to the board. And I'll tell you the reason for that, we're a small town. The odds of the hearing officer knowing personally the person and being cited, decided, would be very good. So, if I get a citation, and I go to court, and the one making the decision is the one person that I don't like, or don't like me, in a small town, I'm going to feel like I didn't get it fair. Where if there's three citizens across the city, maybe male, female, some work in town, some work of more of a broad spectrum of, that if I don't like the, if I don't like the final order the hearing officer does, I know I've got a right to bring it back to the full board, and three of my citizens are going to get to hear my case. And then, if, and then if, you know, if I don't like that decision, I have to go to District Court. And I think Bud's saying he'd rather not have that layer, I can understand why, we'd bog it down. But also, the flip side of it, would not want people to feel like we've just railroaded them, streamlined them, and not given, you know.
Right, that's right.
I feel like, hopefully, that nine out of ten would never get to that point, is what I hope. We don't want to do nothing. What we want to do is come and say, look, the first step I said, the notice. We're giving you a notice that you're out of, that you're in violation, you got thirty days to correct that. My goal would be, that'd be the end of it. And I think a lot of it will.
Didn't we already approve that, that a police officer is going to?
Yes, yes, Hunter's going to be the code enforcement officer. Yeah, because it's got to be somebody that can write a citation. If we go this route, we say you're out of, we give you a notice, if you don't do this in thirty days, we're going to write you a citation, then we got to have somebody there that can come in thirty days. And basically, guys, it just boils down to, if we don't, if we don't enforce what we make, just don't even have it. You know what I'm saying? I'm just not for having ordinances, if you can't or won't enforce them, then ain't no need to have them. Because then they just start getting just used on certain ones, or certain times, and I like it. I think it ought to be, you know, and it's sending it to District Court has just not been very well for.
I think this way right here, you'll give a chest of mouths, it's supposed to give a little bit more team, and a little bit more structure to it, than where people say, hey, they're getting serious about it, and then let's turn all of it.
So, I guess tonight, if I could get from you all, yes, we want to.
Not at any point, do it.
Yeah.
Let me ask one question, and you said this does include animal nuisance?
Yes.
It would actually, I guess, all of city ordinances, through the, even if it's fire work order, or whatever.
As long as it's not a criminal charge or a moving vehicle violation.
Right.
Yeah, that, none of that's brought down.
You can't have City Court anymore.
No, that's all goes to District Court, but, go ahead.
This is just back, we talked about recommended orders. Final orders, again, I think it all goes back to the options. Again, I think it sort of goes back to the options.
It's basically, do you want the hearing officer to make a recommended order or a final order? And then, how do you want the person to be able to appeal the final order? Should he appeal it to the Code Enforcement Board first, and then if he don't get satisfaction, District Court? Or do you want the hearing officer's final order to be final, and his only other option is to go to District Court? And like Bud said, it does take a step out, it does make a, it does bog it down less. But I, looking at for the citizen, if I was a citizen, I'd rather not end up in District Court. I'd rather hang out here in the city, and I'd rather have three people to hear my case than one, if I felt like I wasn't getting done.
Plus, the people that are going to hear of a cohort of board when we see the residents.
Yeah.
Nothing against the District Court, law and government, that's interesting.
I'm not for that, I was originally for the simple, or it's better, but after your explanation, I'm going back to the board, first of all.
We isn't a big one, so the hearing officer probably fine, because I wouldn't know him, and I wouldn't think he buys to me.
Right.
Here, you know, if Mikey's the hearing officer, and I go forward to him, he don't like me, I've been ruined.
You're rough.
You're rough, and then I ain't going to have no other way to go, you know, that wouldn't be right.
You all be talking about though.
Yeah.
I'd give him more teeth too, if it went to District Board, hearing officers, then the board.
I agree.
You're right.
That's just more against.
And I doubt how many is going to, how many is going to end up before the board, I would say very, very few.
If you were District D.
But we need Mike to take care of it, so.
This is always a sticky subject, yeah, and that's just a recommended list, we make orders. I guess we've already got them, no one, actually.
So, I mean, we can just pull over the recent order.
Now, the one thing this does do, Bud, not my part now does or not. Our, this one says, animals first offense, or let's say unsafe and unpaid structure, hundred dollars, okay? But if you appeal it, if you appeal it to the board, and lose, and appeal it to District Court, and lose, then it goes to like five hundred dollars, in this one. Now, we don't have to make it that way, but that's what a lot of cities are doing. So, see there, so, going down a little bit, so see the structure, the building and construction, so it went from a hundred to five hundred. So, if you want to settle it first out, and just say guilty, here's a hundred dollars, that's it. But if you appeal it, you go forward to the board, and then lose, then that's the fine, not a hundred, but five hundred. Or not twenty-five, but seventy-five, you know. Now, I, we don't have to make it that way, but that's the way, that's what's in this model ordinance that a lot of cities do. We don't have to, I mean, that's, that's a, a.
Well, I was saying, it gives them the incentive to go ahead and hear the person's letting it go, go.
And they don't want to appeal it unless they know they're in the right.
That's right. And then, where Bud's at right now, the final deal is, the city shall possess lien on property owned by the person found by non-applicable final order. And I, I get it, that's a, it's a big step to take, it's not something we want to get into on an everyday basis.
Well, I'll tell you another reason you don't want to get into it on an everyday basis. All these things sound simple until you try to do it. Because probably you have, if it's very simple, matter, if I have something against your property, those taxes, etc., see, their houses in the name of Harold and Marcia Sloan, issued that to you. That's not really, Harold and Sloan's not really where we have the problem.
No.
The problem we're going to have, and this is what we run into on the two pending cases, is these properties, although it was a lack of lawful examination, property exam, you can't technically abandon real property. A lot of this property, this problem is being essentially abandoned. You know, you had people die, and, you know, the kids move off, and trying to locate the owners of the property. Sounds real simple until you try to do it, and it's the problem, it's the problem property, we're going to run into that. I mean, we can do what we can do, but I want to tell you right now, that would be one of the problems. Because if you have this case of property, I'll guarantee you, the real owners of that may be plumbers of California, or wherever.
Yes, that, that was discussed heavily in that class we took, and we got to have a set means to notify people. Like Bud's, you can't just go doing stuff and not notify people.
No, it's because it's good.
Yeah.
Of due process issues, and the problem we're going to have on it, probably have always had on, uh, property without suit on. Like I said, finding out who really owns it, and that could be, like I said, I think, on that Osprey property we're getting ready to sell, it took me a long time, run down all the areas, like twenty-six to twenty-eight people we had bringing into that. I mean, that was a major project, not to sue, but run all those people out.
What a lot of cities are doing, I mean, they have a checklist, they put a sign in the yard. Once they write a citation, nobody, you put a sign in the yard. Basically, this property's under citation of the city, blah, blah, you put notices in the door, mail notices to wherever, the same ones you could find. And, you know, there's a list of steps you got to do, and the hunter would have to do all that, that's why.
I think that House Bill also says that the city has to maintain a website.
That, that's exactly right.
That they post what liens would be placed on what property.
Yes.
It is coming up, what you, you.
I think Brinduk has a really good system, and I'll be able to come and see what kind of web system they have.
I think that's a good, just say it in that way, it's because of, you know.
Like I said, most people think that just because of the front.
You know, we still got quite a few liens on property for unpaid taxes. I don't know if any of you was here, but the last year, I think, that we filed liens on them was two thousand seven, so that's how far back it went. And then we realized, they don't care. There's liens on their property, and they still don't pay their taxes.
Well, here's the thing about that, we have, you know, we put it up in the county court clerk's office, making it possible.
Yes, I did, we had liens up there.
And the thing about it is, I don't like, but the beauty of this, is some of the taxes, and other people buying up these.
Yes, that's why we quit doing it.
Or closing on, and we should be collecting some money on some of that.
But then, just like this Osborne property's getting ready to sell.
Hold on that.
We always go in the hole, we don't even get the taxes to us. We don't get them, they don't sell them for enough. You know, everybody else gets their piece that works on it, the courts and whoever, but we don't.
Well, yeah, but actually, you know, those who expire the facts, which they do, because the interest rate is so high, and the length, you know, they'll collect that, or we, you know, we should be getting some money from that.
That was awesome in that class, it was interior system, how it was paid off, so. And if you were the city, years down the block, the first lien holders are going to get it, banks.
But I realize the purpose of all this is not to try to get property or the taxes, it was to get them paid with this, it's to get basically that. We don't want to do the, you know, the liens.
Well, I think everything else, well, it's like, I need my margin order from council, what's going to be, anything wrong with that?
Great, the ordinance that you got, is it Model A of League of Cities, or Model B, or do you know?
I don't know, but I'm, the one you gave was color-coded, so I couldn't make out which one of the ABs.
That color code.
It was a, I think, it, it.
See, Bud didn't give them Model A tonight, he gave them.
And you discussed, you know, it was covered in League of Cities also, and it had set up pretty much the same way. You had a cohort officer, then you had cohort board, and they own one of them.
As a hearing officer.
I'm bigger than three fan boards, that's all we call them, we need, we don't have a type of. And then, one of them become a hearing officer, and then, we would take any citations to them, if somebody wants to, if I have a hearing on it, he can say, yep, we're in violation, do you need this, or you want to object to it, or protest it, or appeal it, you can take it to the hearing board. And then, if they still weren't happy, after the hearing board's findings, then it, yeah.
And I like that system better, just because of what I, I think if I feel like I'm doing wrong. Probably not, Bud.
I don't think we need to.
Because what he needs to do, preparing ordinance, running back to the board, I know. But I think I'm getting the feeling of what y'all want.
Fill in some of the gaps, but you all can look at what you think.
I'm personally in support of the Code Enforcement Board plus the hearing officer model, that's what I'm for.
And the hearing officer issues a final order, but if the citizen disagrees with that, he can, what would you say, what do you call it? Payle it to board. And then, at least, he would feel like he's got three citizens looking at him, not just one. And then, if he still feels done wrong, he can, that's my.
Well, you would grant that word.
Okay.
Counsel.
All right, well, thank you all, I know it's painstaking, but it is what it is, it's important. And it's one of those things that always draws a curious people, either think you ought to be cleaning up, or people think you ought to leave people alone, or the other, it ain't much in it. On the agenda, moving around along, but. Yeah, do we have any, do you guys have any comments from the council for the meeting at all? Now, comments from the audience?
I just want to ask you about, I talked to a contractor the other day, he said they just want to annex my apartment, I was on the Richardson Lane there.
Where at now?
Off the across from the law yard, where I built my building. He said they just want to put all that in the city, and I don't want to do that. Mayor Dave McKenzie, or Cam, or Eddie, I own the most of, but Dave got his mobile home part. I asked him last night, and he said he didn't want it. And Eddie Blachier bought the old Sawville part, and he said, I asked him if he was coming over here, and he said he didn't want it. I asked everybody for a come in, just to make sure, because everybody wanted, I didn't want to be black on, you know.
Yeah. Well, what we'll do, Mikey, is, the best way to answer that is, there's a, there's a system that has to be done. And we'll, if the board, if the council decides, we're going to annex, then here's what happens. They say, yes, we're going to annex, we get it surveyed. Then, once we get it surveyed, we got a map, and that map will spell out each property owner, so we know who those property owners are.
I have to send you a letter.
Then, the city will send you a letter saying, we're proposing to annex your property, okay?
Now, if I go against it, that means you can't do it, right?
No, so then, if, once we do that, if somebody that's a landowner in that map wants to start a petition, they can start a petition through the clerk, clerk's office. Fifty-five percent of the people that own land, own land, in our proposed annex area, would have to sign the petition to get it to a ballot. Now, in that, in the meantime, the city wants to annex, they can go on and annex, but you can get your petition. What that petition does then, is gets it on a ballot. Once it goes on a ballot at the voting machine, registered voters inside, registered voters in the area that's getting annexed.
Yeah, that's county, that's a little earlier.
Registered voters get to go vote yes or no. So, see, it's complicated, I didn't make the law, I'm just, so, like in your case, were you on the land? You own the land, but you don't live there? You could sign the petition saying, I don't want to be in the city, but if it comes to the vote, you can't vote, because you don't live.
You have to vote where you live.
You vote where you live.
I can put a house on it.
Yeah.
I own fifteen acres there.
Yeah, you can put a house on it, you gotta move, if you move over.
I don't want to rent a home.
And my people who rent houses, the person who owns the house gets the letter, and can come to the hearing and get the petition, but the person who lives in the house is the one that could go to the polls and vote, because that's where they're registered to vote. Does that make sense?
You're about two foot over my head, you're getting that.
I mean, you got some real folks.
Yeah, whoever lives in the house can vote.
When it comes to vote.
You could sign a petition as the landowner, but your renters would have to vote.
Yeah, yeah, renters, yeah. I see why.
Everyone who lives there and registered to vote there, is who.
And they've got seven, eight mobile homes down through there, all them people could vote, but he couldn't.
Right.
Because he lives over there, but.
Yeah.
Right.
When it comes to the, being on the ballot, you have to vote in your precinct, so that's why you couldn't vote.
Not like, not like everybody else.
Yeah.
And just remember that the people that live in those trailers, if they're paying their own water bill, and sewer bill, and trash bill, they stand to save by coming to the city.
They don't pay taxes.
You know Doug McKenzie?
They don't pay property taxes.
You know Doug McKenzie?
They, you know.
I was over his house last night, and he, he said he didn't want it, and that's the highest home, because I, I figured, I ain't got nothing there. My building, I, I piddled it mine, but, you know.
Why would you not want it, you deserve it, you just don't want to pay the extra tax?
Have you ever realized how much tax I pay in a year?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, city ain't nothing.
But see, again, even though you don't have a house there yet, and you don't pay trash there, and you don't have water there, right?
I got the meter, I ain't got no other, but, I got the city water, it come from the house, and I bought the land.
Yeah.
But I ain't got second gas.
Right, okay. So, even though you don't pay that stuff right now, because there's no house there, you know. One thing, if I was you, I would take in consideration, I'm just being honest with you, in the city, there's no zoning. Once you come in the city, your land's not restricted to zoning, currently it is.
In the county it is.
I think it's more than that.
And then, I don't know what is zoned, but if you're in the county, you're zoned, if you're in the city.
They told me, well, I mean, that's what I.
If you're in the city, there's no zone, so your property's no longer restricted in anywhere, if you're in, if you're in the city. And if currently, even though you do live there, you're paying tax for the fire.
There's a lot of fire there.
You do.
Like the house on fire, who do you call?
And then, if you, if you, if that property was in the city, you wouldn't pay that fire tax, it's first.
I've got several houses in the city, but.
You don't pay fire tax on it.
There's one that's in town.
Just one's in the camp, right.
That property's talked about, keeping on your property bill, it will have a fire tax on it.
Your property has.
To where it's not going to have it if you come to the city.
So, you got.
Actually, it's going to take much.
Yeah, 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 there's, there's two of them, both of it, but.
Not like everyone.
Yeah, but our purpose is, we want to grow, we want the city to grow. And, and we are, we are literally like, I hate to throw out names, but this is just common sense. Kentucky Fried Chicken, the Dollar General stores, the gas station, and they would like to sell alcohol, and they can't. All those doctor's offices, all those businesses, all those people are here at the city, but they're not contributing to the city. And, and they're ready to contribute to the city, they want to.
They do want to?
Yeah, I mean, the businesses, they don't.
What about High Bottom and Elwood, you got, you're in the city, you ain't going to the county, come back from city.
Yeah, see, from, that's our purpose for doing this. Right now, the boys can't get from here to the hospital without going out of the city.
And count back in the city.
Yeah, and so, twenty-five sixty-five, from, from about Joe Young's office there, Eddie's building there is in the city. So, see, he wanted that in the city.
That's in the city?
Yes, so he's in the city, he come and wanted it in the city.
And he come and walked over and think it was, he ain't for sure, he gets that, I think my building is.
Well, he can't have alcohol today. He can't have alcohol today, and I feel sure it is, and he wanted it in, you know.
Oh, boy, everybody's got alcohol, they don't have to be in city that.
I'm pretty sure that's.
He does sell.
May not be legal.
Yeah, it's in the city, the building is in the city.
Yeah, I, I know.
I think that's the last thing there, but he's.
About the last thing, so from right there, from Big Sandy on, like his, his car wash is not.
That's actually not horrible.
It's not, no, and, you know, Stella Moore's not, and the gas station down there, Marathon's not, Kentucky Fried Chicken. Look, the new Dollar General store, look, look, I mean, are we going to be a city and grow? If we are, we got to be it, you know, and it's just, that's, that's, that's the reason, Ford's not to pick on anybody.
And one of the reasons this came up again, is some of those businesses out there asking to be.
They want it.
Yeah, business probably want to be a place for us, and, and all that kind of stuff.
And they don't have to, you know, they're, if they're a corporation, they're not the ones paying the taxes herself, but, you know, they want, the corporation was the ones asking, because they want to sell alcohol.
They probably have abundant taxes on alcohol, anything. I mean, alcohol tax and such.
Yeah.
I have to see the whole lot.
Hundred, hundred sixty-nine thousand one hundred dollars.
Last year.
Last year.
For a good difference.
And if they might want to. And it may have won about sixty thousand dollars, didn't it? That in two years, maybe.
So, yeah. But I, I, I understand your point, I, I, well taken. And that's the, if we do it, that's the procedure. We gotta get it surveyed, and look at the map, and then each person that owns property in that survey will get a letter from us.
Now, you're known to-
Yeah, that's right. Stating that, and it will come to whatever, like that property on six forty-four you were talking about, whatever addresses at the courthouse, that's where we mail the letter to, you know, so, yeah.
I gotta figure, I, I know what you're saying.
That's where we mail the letter to, and then you'll know.
By the taxes.
And then, you know, you have a right to sign a petition, but about fifty or fifty-five percent have to sign a petition to get it to a ballot.
Much people live, or it ain't landowners.
The landowners does the petition.
Yeah.
The people that lives there does the-
The voting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then if it gets on the ballot and comes to a vote, uh, we've already, by then annexed it, fifty-five percent have to vote no to get it back out of the city. So, that, I mean, that's the procedure all over America, or all of Kentucky, I don't know about America, but that's the same procedure every city would have to go to. And I don't know, some days I wonder if it'll ever happen, as long as we've dealt with it, but we need it to happen. We need to grow, you know? We need to be, uh, the size of city, your population, uh, just like, uh, I'll say this, just like the CARES Act money, and American Rescue Plan money, that's coming to cities and counties, every dollar of that is based upon population. So, we're, we're, we're really serving four or five thousand people, we're only a city of twenty-six hundred people. See, but we're, we're putting water, sewer, all this stuff out, all over. Uh, and yeah, they're paying a little bit more for it, but not as much as-
Your coffee's?
Be, to be, yes, you know what I'm saying?
I ain't watching it, I don't know.
And just like right now, with the CARES Act and American Rescue Plan, we would be getting tons more dollars of money if we was four thousand instead of twenty-six hundred. And we need to grow, you know, and that, that's the only reason for doing it. Is anybody else in the audience?
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question. On, on last month's meeting, when you were talking about, uh, having a, uh, an officer to be enacting, uh, these, uh, new ordinances to, you know, to be, uh, working on that, you had originally, you said that, that y'all had enough money set aside to, uh, hire a brand-new officer to exclusively work on writing and checking everything out as part of, uh, basically an ordinance officer, in twenty-four hours. So that was planned, and I know I saw before the meeting last month, she figured had the application for a new officer on the Louisa's faceplate, but now you're saying, I heard you say that, that a hundred now is gonna be the-
The new officer's gonna replace Hunter on the street.
Okay, okay. And so that, and nobody's left the force or anything? Cuz that was, uh, that was before June meeting, but I saw you put that-
No, nobody's left.
Okay. But yeah, like I said, I just was asking that because I heard you said you was gonna hire the new officer to do that, and Bud said he would train-
Can't afford to take a guy off the street, that's a hundred percent on code enforcement.
Okay, that sounded, but when I heard, you know, from him saying Hunter tonight, so, yeah, that's all I was gonna ask, so that's no problem.
So we budgeted enough to replace him.
Okay, well, that sounds good.
And he, he may not be able to be moved over, I mean, but we're gonna have to ease him down.
Takes a long, hard, if I'm buying you a friend.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I do have, uh, two quick things that will be about five minutes for executive session, and we're out of here if somebody, you don't have anything else now?
I just wanna ask you, they gonna sell the office and the house, or what are they gonna do with it?
Uh, it's in the paper.
Alrighty, righty, at ten o'clock on the Four Hill steps.
Well, they gonna pay, I could sit if you get it, I didn't.
We have to be alone.
Turn it down back in the parking lot there?
Yeah, that's our goal.
So the city bought the bid on?
Okay.
I don't, I don't worry about that.
Okay.
Maybe there could be somebody there that out there, it's a-
We may have to hire somebody to tear it down, though.
No, we can, in case we-
You're good at that, ain't ya?
Hey, I did run the bulldozer.
That, uh-
I'll start.
Light the torch.
If they get it, if you let Martin back there, that's bad.
Whatever happens, I don't care, he knows it.
We're busy, man.
Broadest of worlds.
We're happy, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it. I have a motion, we're going to executive session real quick. Motion by, I'm planning to get a ticket by, uh, uh, it's called the long paper.
I wish we gets the council members with some short-